So I will call this special session of the Detroit City Council to order on Monday, February 21st, 2021 at 3:05 PM. Roll call, start with Shelley Ingle.
Counselor Tim Luke here.
Okay.
Shelley Ingle, Council President, Building Commissioner.
Eric Page, Parks Commissioner.
Michelle Tezdale, Commissioner at Large.
Jim Tret, Mayor, and Emergency Preparedness. Shep, you're muted. Can you unmute?
How's that?
Yeah. Tell us you're here.
I'm here, a former Street Commissioner.
Former. Okay, any announcements not on the, not on the agenda? Relevant to city business may be discussed by the Council at this meeting. Citizens are encouraged to attend the meetings, all meetings of the City Council to ensure that they remain informed. Agenda items may be moved back. You know, public hearing is scheduled. Any announcements? Okay. Moving along to item number five, review and approve the HPH contract with the City of Detroit. Just, and I don't see Rob here.
He was a second ago.
Yeah, I'm on, I'm here. I'm out in the field, but I'm, I'm here.
So my understanding is this is primarily just because we needed to clean some stuff up with USDA for the grant.
Correct. We have to be officially under contract on specifically there, the USDA money before we can, the city can enter into a contract with Olson LLC to build anything. So that's basically where we're at. We've been going back and forth with USDA on some pretty onerous requirements regarding our contract, regarding other things. It's been a, it's been very stressful and, and you know, it's one of those things where we typically don't use USDA funding or RD funding on public works projects despite the fact that the grants are fairly attractive. And this whole process has kind of reminded us why that is. It's very difficult for everybody involved, but at this point that it's the only money really available. So yeah, so anyway, that's why, what our contract is there. They've limited our, our contractual, the, the, they've limited us to 15% for design and construction management and all that, which is very, it's for a project this size, it's a really a pretty small amount. But like I said, we're, you know, we just need to get this done.
Has our city attorney seen this contract? I just, what is in the book was?
Yeah, we're just going to talk about that. City Attorney saw it. He has no problems with it. Just so council knows, I went down, I was in tangent last week going over the grant application page by, their, their requirements page by page. And at one point, the lady I was talking to said, we're sorry, we didn't think this would take this long. So it is on them. They're going slow. Go from there. So do, first of all, do I have a motion to approve the contract with HPH with the City of Detroit?
Hey Eric, I think you're on mute. Eric, you're on mute.
I didn't really want to hear myself anyway. Um, I myself am not, based on the timeline of which I've been able to weed through some of the documents, in spite of the fact that our city attorney has looked through this and approved it, I, I did have a couple more questions for Rob about the scope of why this contract is coming into play, just so I had clarity on it. But from my perspective at this point, I, I feel that the city should, we should at least maybe have a handhold with Marion County or, or something because of the enormity of this contract as well as a one right behind it. I don't want to see delays for very long, but I also want to make sure that, that we're proceeding carefully and correctly at this point. So when do you want to start to work on this?
Guys, could we do, I'd like to do this after the last meeting. I'd like a hand so I can call on who's going to be next, please. We've been to do this for a while and I'm going to kind of step down, step on. So Counselor Shepherd, if you're sure.
Yeah. When do you want to start this project for the temporary water plant?
My understanding is it's already started, right?
We haven't started any construction yet. We're really holding up to try and follow the guidelines as close to USDA as we can. Really where we're at is we'd like to start it as soon as possible. So you know, I guess whenever that might be, we're kind of, at this point, we're stuck until we get authorization.
Okay. Counselor Tezdale.
Hey, I'm, I'm thinking that on our agenda, it might help us to know what's happening right now and how HPH is being paid right now versus the $1 million grant. So we can kind of get a grasp because I don't have it. And, and then maybe we can understand like the pools of money and that would be maybe the discuss, let's see, item number seven or item number 10. Because some of us don't understand, maybe it's just because we're new, that it is the insurance, Matt, paying for you guys right now, the, the water system insurance?
Uh, Rob, you want to take that?
Yeah, so um, basically, I mean, right now, right now, nobody's paying for us. It's the, the work that we're doing is coming out with, the money would be coming out of basically multiple difference, different pots of money. Some of the money can come out of insurance, but the bulk of the money that we've spent so far would be on the flushing of the water system and the distribution system stuff, which was not insured. So ultimately that, so that money for the flushing and all that will eventually come from FEMA. But FEMA is working on still setting up projects and until there's a project number, we can't get any FEMA money. And the Special Public Works Fund, which is the state of Oregon, has offered as a bridge loan and a partial grant to help pay for the city's match on the FEMA funds. That can't be applied for until FEMA actually has a project number. So there's that stuff. The work that we've done on the temporary treatment plant, the, that would be paid out of the EQUAG money, the RD USDA money. As long as that goes through, part of it can get paid out of insurance, but, but the insurance hasn't, their valuation on the treatment plant has been very low. So we, you know, the city hasn't accepted that valuation yet because their valuation was $130,000 and that's way, way low for, for, for the control building. So if the RD USDA money doesn't come through, then that would eventually be FEMA money as well, but that money is, that FEMA money is months away.
So have you been working, have you gotten, guys gotten paid for any of the work you've been doing?
No, we haven't because the city hasn't had any way to pay us.
So, so there was there insurance for the water system at all? I thought I had heard at one point there was and, and, but you know, we haven't had any reports on payments or anything. And if we have, I haven't seen them because I'm new.
Yeah, so, so the insurance, the insurance money has been paying money. They've been paying like for, you know, they paid for the pump equipment. They paid for some of that. I know that Christine was taking care of getting them paid. It was one of the, you basically were carrying the city. I mean, you know, we work on contracts all the time where we don't get paid for a while. Okay. And, and it, we understand that there's, that this, the city has no money to, to pay us right now. So, so we understand that this isn't our, this isn't our first rodeo with, with, you know, disaster stuff. Usually it's floods, but, but you know, we kind of understood the way it works. That being said, we'd like to get paid sometime soon.
Counselor Page?
Yeah. Rob, do we, do you have a, a running number and is the city aware of what our potential bill at this point is with you?
Yeah, we're so, we're about, we're, right now, we're about $80,000 into it with all our time. But like I said, that's, well, the city is not going to get a, a bill from us until the city can pay us. Does that make sense? So we're, we're keeping track of our time and everything, but mostly for, I mean, that's going to be a FEMA reimbursement purposes thing. You know, FEMA works great for communities that have a pot of money that they can, that they can use. They work great for big cities and that sort of thing, but it's, 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 it's pretty, yeah, I mean, we're obviously hanging ourselves out there quite a bit.
Yeah, Rob.
Counselor Shepherd.
The, the pump that was burned up on the Brighton Bush, who paid for the replacement of that? How's that going to work out?
That was paid for, that's the insurance company.
Okay. I, I'm kind of concerned about just relying on the Brighton Bush because of the runoff and flooding issues. We're going to have issues of debris coming down the river probably for the next 10 years, especially if we get some big storms. And I was kind of wondering why we're not, you know, maybe thinking about a line from the Card Lock down to ODOT. It's about 1.8 miles, but it would be a permanent alternative supply for treated water.
Oh, you talk from, you talking from running it from Idana?
Well, now, it, actually it runs down towards the Card Lock. You could hook up there because they supply water to the campground and the Card Lock. But I, I believe we were thinking about hooking up from there and then go down to our line at ODOT, which is about 1.8 miles.
Right, so that was, that option was, when, when the fire first started, that was one of the options we first considered. The cost for that was going to be prohibitive. I mean, it was going to be way more expensive than replacing the treatment plant. But that was also when we thought, when we were, you know, promised money within a couple weeks.
What, what? What was the cost for that line, that pipeline?
It, I, it'd be about close to a million dollars just in piping. Depending on whether or not ODOT lets that, ODOT and OHA lets that sit above ground on the side of the road. OHA really doesn't like it when you do that. If it's buried, we're talking probably about a million dollars in piping and then you'd need a pump station as well.
Oh, because I, I thought that would be a gravity flow situation for Idana since their, their tanks up on the hill.
No, I, I think they'd need, they might be able to, I'd have to look at the numbers. They might be able to get it to the city. It'd be pretty low pressure at that point without a pump station. And anybody up on the hill, I don't think would be able to get any water based on that without a pump station.
I'd be very skeptical that it wouldn't need a pump station. That's a lot of loss between Idana and Detroit. Sorry for joining in late.
Yeah. So really what we're considering here today is, is the contract with HPH to satisfy USDA. And my understanding is without that, we, we may be in trouble with the grant. Counselor Luke?
Jim, I understand that that's what this meeting's for today too, but I honestly have to weigh in with, with Greg and so forth. I've, I haven't actually seen, I wasn't on council when that estimate slash cost to run the line from Idana was proposed, we didn't see any paperwork from anybody. And what the breakdown of what those costs were, because I've done a little bit of inquiry myself and it seems like I may have found someone that, you know, would bore that line and put it in the whole way for about half of what they proposed it would cost back then. So I'm not sure where the, all the other costs were going or if they didn't have, it's more prudent. I understand we're on a time crunch here, I do. But I also feel like it was extremely mismanaged to budget this way back then. And I feel, I, you know, I told someone today, I mean, I, I feel like I'm in a French press cooker because the weight is on us to, you know, pass or not pass or approve or not approve when I haven't even seen it. I mean, I got 131 page thing emailed to me last, you know, a few days ago. I don't have time to go over that or anything else. And the questions that Michelle, Counselor Tezdale has brought up is relevant too. It's hard because there hasn't been any of these work sessions with these budgetary numbers put in front of us that show us all the different breakdowns. And so I feel to be prudent to make a choice about things. Once again, I understand the urgency. But I'm not, I'm not on board with the temporary system and all the money spent when it seems like for close to the same money or not much more and be funded, we could actually have a permanent solution for the long term as we rebuild. And I hate to even bring it up, but it is a question and I know that, that Counselor Shepherd is concerned about that too. And really who and how and what have we really looked at that option? So once again, I know this meeting isn't for that, but it is in, it brings a little background up to that as why, why, you know, a lot of us are concerned about this and passing that. And so I just wanted to weigh in with that. Because if I, I'll be honest with you, if I were to pass anything today would not be with a lot of clarity. You know, and, and a lot of this too, being new of course, is knowing the proper procedure and not putting our city to be liable for anything, but also taking care of our people and, and our system. And you know, I, I think we need help.
Yeah. So if, yeah, so, um, so we, we did, you know, we presented that as, as an option back when we first started talking about that. And honestly, within, you know, within our organization, that was our first, that was our first thing, well, we can get, you know, we can get water from Idana, that's, that's going to be the easiest thing. What gets in the way of that is how we pay for that. Okay? Because the EQUAG grant, the USDA grant that we were told we could get literally months ago, that we could get that in a couple of weeks, that will only pay for temporary treatment. So they considered a line from Idana to not be temporary treat, not to be temporary water So then if that is, if they aren't paying for that, what we have left is, is FEMA money and FEMA money for something like that, even if we had pulled the trigger on it right away, would still be months away. They, they aren't looking to, to start writing their first project until sometime next week. And that procedure is, I mean, that's just, that's just the way, way it goes. And I know Matt, Matt can kind of fill in this a little bit that about, you know, what happened with the funding. Funding is driven, unfortunately, funding, the funding mechanisms have driven all of these decisions. If the city had the money, if the city had the money, then we wouldn't be doing things the way we're doing them, honestly.
Counselor Tezdale?
Yeah, um, thank you, Rob. I understand the frustration because of who I work for. And so is the EQUAG grant the same as the USDA grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And they, the USDA grant only funds temporary water systems or is that FEMA, just for clarification?
So USDA, the EQUAG grant is funding, really, the, the EQUAG program is emergency funding. And we had actually gone through this early on in the process with USDA and FEMA regarding different options, the emergency intertie between Detroit and Idana, the, versus a temporary treatment plant. And basically, we kind of sent these proposals to both the city and EQUAG and EQUAG essentially gave back their priority on what they would prefer to pay for. And that was the temporary water treatment plant as opposed to an intertie between the cities. And then, I mean, we had talked a little bit to FEMA about getting them to pay for the emergency intertie and they kind of deferred us to, I, and I apologize, I can't remember the program, but there's essentially a separate program that, and I believe it's through Business Organ that does funding for redundancy, which is what both FEMA and USDA consider this a redundancy issue as opposed to an actual emergency solution, was this would be something for a future, prevention of future emergencies by having the emergency intertie as opposed to an immediate solution to the problem.
Counselor Page?
Thank you. A, I, I would, I think I'm just going to go ahead and I'm going to, I'm not sure I'm out of order on this, but I would like to make a motion that we move to a work session environment of, we, with this, there was a lot of content in these two contracts. I think a lot of people kind of got wobbly about it. Nobody wants to get sued. Nobody wants this project to slow down. God, I wanted, that want it to be moving yesterday. I think if we could sort out some of our concerns and let everybody get relaxed about million dollar moves here, we could come back and be able to vote on these contracts with a little more confidence. They came with a small window into our hands and I think we need a moment to have possibly a work session and then maybe get some confidence level as to this, where we stand with these and, and be able to vote on them based on that, that type of a situation rather than where we're sitting at the moment.
Counselor Ingle?
Thank you. I, I want to echo a little bit what everybody else is saying specifically about this contract and this agenda item. I received on Friday at five o'clock, a 300-page document on Friday night with no staff report or no city attorney report of how I'm supposed to wade through with, without an attorney degree or a degree in engineering, how to read through this and the recommendation. I, as an adult and as a representative of the City of Detroit, do not feel that it is in my best interest or my people to sign it just without some overview. Now, I, I have no concern that there's nothing, that there's something wrong with this contract. I have every faith in that. And I also understand that in the reality is, is I wish we had, we had had the opportunity, but with the funding and everything, that we'd had the opportunity to do this two months ago. I understand that we, we wanted to do this yesterday. But at this point, waiting, waiting a few more days, I think where we can get a staff report or city attorney report about these contracts is going to make us all look like we know what the heck we're doing and that we do it responsibly.
Counselor Tezdale?
Yeah, I agree with Eric. I was wondering if we could move that, that open work session to right now to flush out some of the things that's been going on because we don't have a water commissioner to ask. And so now that we have, you know, HPH here, maybe we could talk about some things before, you know, what is in front of us on the agenda before the work session? Do that work session now, just to?
That's what I'm thinking. The, the one thing I think that I'm concerned about is the USDA grant is the only fund a temporary fix. And we have that before us today. I think if we go back and say, well, we want to do the whole thing, as Counselor Luke is saying, which would be great, but then from everything I've heard is we'd lose that grant. And do we want to lose a million dollars? I just throw that out for whatever it's worth.
Yeah, thank you, Jim.
I, I agree with, with that too. Mayor Tret, I, and forgive me if, if this is frustrating, my comments, my, am I still there?
Yeah.
Am I still there? Forgive me if it's frustrating. As, as the person I am and cross your Ts, dot your Is in a business owner, I want to know if anybody asked the question, who they asked and who the reply was of why that tying into Idana would not be considered a temporary. Is it so much that Idana just had to give us a letter that said, you're allowed to do this for 24 months, 36 months? I mean, is it that small of a detail that they could just say, okay, you know, this is only temporary and officially, right? Because Rob, you know what you're going through and the hassles of USDA, but did somebody forget to say, oh, well, I think Idana is only going to let us do this temporary? Because they are, they don't want us connected to that forever. So it is a 100%, it's temporary. So did we just ask one person, take what they said? Did we not hire our attorney to talk with their attorney to see where we could meet and do? This is the problem that I have.
You went away, Tim.
Sorry, my, I, when I get a, I'm on my phone and when I get a phone call, it shuts me off. And, and so this is, maybe that was done. I don't know. None of us know because there's no communication about this process to us and to the citizens, which is again, you know, frustrating. And so, you know, in perfect world, we had the water commissioner that was doing this with HPH and USDA and talking and at least a couple of us staying within ethics rules can talk and just understand, you know, our work sessions, which again, I, I know that in this situation, we get an emergency session like this today with short notice, I would highly recommend that we set up a meeting for every Friday or whatever. It's easy to cancel it, but it's not easy to put it together and everybody to bring their schedules together. It's why I didn't. But it's not easy to put it together and everybody to bring their schedules together. It's why I didn't reply. I didn't even know if I could be on this today because I had a doctor's appointment. Scheduled for weeks. So if we had a work session scheduled for every week, we could easily cancel it a couple of days in advance, but at least it would make less work for Kelly. I think too, but anyway, those are the questions that are just burning inside of me thinking, okay. Rob said they won't fund it because it's temporary. And I'm thinking, why is it temporary? Who, who decided that? Um, and did we, did we just take whoever said that? Could we not talk to? Somebody else and let them know this is just temporary and it would have been the fastest, best, most pure. I think easiest solution if we could have got that funded and then we could work on the long-term solution. So. Sorry for taking the time, but it's things that I've wanted to say for quite a long time.
Counselor Shepherd.
Uh, yeah, I, I agree with Tim. Uh, you know, if we ever have a disastrous flood on the, on the Brighton Bush, we, we would always have a backup. Of treated drinking water. And I was also wondering, uh, uh, how long are we going to use this temporary, uh, facility? And what is the capacity? Cause I have the impression that after so many months or whatever, we're going to have to tear down that, uh, temporary facility. And, uh. We will have that for a while. I, I'm just worried about the Brighton Bush because we're under the gun as far as flooding for maybe the next ten years over. That drainage is over a hundred thousand acres, which is about a hundred and fifty-six square miles. That's a lot of territory and we've already noticed a lot of debris coming down that river. So I think that's an issue.
Just, I just want to jump in with one real quick comment here in regards to Idana is that. Idana. They don't pull from the Brighton Bush, but in the future. They have uncertainty with their water supply as does Detroit. I mean, uh, Idana didn't suffer the same damage that the city did, but ultimately, I mean, their water source still comes from. A, a lot of the same surrounding area. So I mean, they're also looking at possible issues with unreliable, unreliability in their water source. And we're actually. In the early stages of a project with them to look to shore some of that up. So I, I guess they, they have some of the same issues and. Uh, to be honest with you, I, I think I would. Also, I mean, it, it seems like a great idea for a long-term redundancy to have that intertie. And I think it's a good idea regardless. And just kind of the, the hangup that we hit early on was. How feasible or who, who's going to supply the money for that upfront? And when we had those conversations with people. Everybody all on the funding agencies preferred the idea of a temporary treatment plant. And that's kind of the, uh, to avoid a long-term hangup. I mean, this is. We went down that path with, with the city at some of the council meetings. We brought those ideas up and we just, we went down that path because that was the. At that point in time, the path of least resistance with the funding agencies to get the process of restoring water to the city started. Um, so that's just kind of the background and also some uncertainty with Idana's water source as well.
Counselor Shepherd.
Yeah, I, I talked to the water commissioner in Idana and some other folks. And, uh, Chief Ewing said that they pumped, uh, seventy-five million gallons during the fire and they never ran out. So it sounds like a pretty good water source.
It is, but they, I guess the. They aren't immune to seeing the same effects that you guys are, um, with shifting landscapes. That doesn't mean that their water source will dry up. Um, it's just th- they also have some unpredictability in their water source going forward.
If I may supplement a little bit, Matt?
No, I'm sorry, this, uh, go from it, Rob.
Um, well, yeah, I think Kenny might be going to say the same thing, uh, as me. One thing could, should be, um. Noted is that, uh, they, their plant, I think they produce a hundred and seventy-five gallons a minute, which is, would have been, was enough. They could probably share enough, especially before the summer to, uh, to supply Detroit with that, but. Uh, supplying Detroit from Idana. Quantity wise is going to be an issue.
Counselor Teasdale.
Um, I was wondering if there's going to be a quantity issue from Idana and a quantity issue. From our, um, temporary water supply at the Brighton Bush. Why can't it be together, uh, to ensure? Clean water and enough water. Um, if like what, uh, Tim was saying. If we could use that grant to, well, get, get a second opinion on how much it costs to pull water from Idana. And still pull water from Brighton Bush because we know Mackey Creek now, after what all the stuff I've researched. Is gonna have to erode, the trees are gonna have to fall and then give it a couple of years before we can pull water out of there because it's just going to get plugged. If we can c- call that temporary from Idana and also. You know, add to the supply from Brighton Bush, having it a temporary system. Um, and using the USDA grant, does USDA grant have to only go to one water supplier or can it go to both? If we can use the insurance money for, um, the Brighton Bush, um, depending on how, you know, the line items pay. And also the, the grant as temporary from. Idana, you add them together in our water storage as long as we have enough water storage. Maybe that. Uh, fills the town, fulfills the need for the town because I was on, you know, I work for. Um, an agency where we deal with clean water and I was on a meeting on, um, Thursday. And they did a, the study on a fire, uh, a fire that happened, I think in Clough, Lurado. And they followed the toxins that were in the water after the fire. And it's like five or six years that aluminum and manganese. Are in the water. In five or six years, we get a, if we get some supply from Idana and it's clean. We don't know what's coming from Brighton Bush with all that burn. Um, if we could compile both as a temporary system. I feel like that would be safe, safer for the people because if we've got that temporary water cleaning system. Um, who knows how much it filters through for the water storage and then for the people and when they come and start building or for the summer. I just feel, I feel like a break, since we can't get from Mackey. Um, if we pull from another area temporarily, then it seems like that would, might be a solution. I think we got to shoot it a little bit higher and maybe. Just start questioning the people that are saying no, and they might turn around and say yes.
Counselor Luke.
Um, thanks, Mayor Tret. Uh, I. I like what Michelle's saying and, and Rob, you and, and Matt, uh. You know, obviously our concern here is to lose the money if we don't, you know, if you snooze, you lose kind of thing. And I, and I get that. And so it's nice to just. Be able to have this discussion because. I do think that, that we need to, I think we needed to ask those questions. Um, earlier on and, and now we really need to ask that. And, and with that. You know, Shep, uh, Counselor Shepherd asked the volume. I, what I understand is this temporary plant is seventy-five gallons a minute. Which is pretty, seems pretty marginal. And the other, so the other question. I had was, you know, are we doing a temporary for seventy-five gallons a minute because? A hundred gallons a minute was exponentially too expensive or? Do we not have the capacity or, or what? I, I just don't know. Or, or did USDA say anything over seventy-five gallons a minute is not temporary? Why did we go with such a small, um, temporary filtration system? So that's one real question I have. And the other is, is there a way to possibly look at? Creating, um, a backup situation still under temporary. Um, through USDA and continue this funding and so forth, but look at tying into Idana.
Matt, I saw your hand.
Yeah. So I guess to respond to that, um. Yes, uh, is seventy gallons a minute is a little small. Um, the original plan was actually for a hundred and fifty gallon a minute plant through West Tech we had talked to. Um, and I, I know we had reached out to a number of other equipment manufacturers as well. And. At the time we initially reached out, West Tech had a seventy gallon a minute plant, a. Hundred and fifty gallon a minute plant and a three hundred thou, or a three hundred gallon per minute plant. And that three hundred gallon per minute plant was. A both oversized and be very expensive. Um, and then two, so we, we actually started down the path of the hundred and fifty gallon a minute plant. But ultimately, we did not receive authorization. In time to secure that plant before another water system rented that out. Um, which left essentially a seventy gallon a minute plant left for us to use. We ended up going with that plant because that was what was, A, what was left and would. Serve the residents that are still in town, but we knew that at that point in time, that was not a, you know, five-year solution. That was a, that would get us. Until we could get. Full-sized equipment personally, I guess fabricated specifically for the city of Detroit. So we were kind of, it was, it was really a, a availability of what was there to be rented on the shelf at that time.
So.
Go ahead, Tim.
So how much was the seventy du- gallon plant? How much was the one fifty gallon plant? How much longer would it take to do the hundred and fifty or get another one built? Um, yeah, I, I wasn't aware of that that's the. Uh, that's the way that it went. Um. It, it. I do a lot of work for a couple of different companies, uh, that do water purification and I've talked to. Two different people that are pretty well-educated on this. Neither one understands why it's. Such a big deal and so much time from before to get a plant, a purification plant built. Um, for the water that we have up there. And if we had one going in that was temporary, that was a hundred and twenty-five or more gallons a minute, we wouldn't have this conversation. It wouldn't be so hard. So maybe. Maybe it's the only decision that could make. I, I don't know. I'm just trying to find out why. Uh, because I am really concerned as a lot of constituents who have called me personally are concerned about the amount of volume and, or the lack of.
Rob?
Yeah. So we're concerned about it too. Um, so. I, I've heard, I've heard this a lot and, and I've had people talk to me about, well, what about this water treatment plant and what about this water treatment plant? The thing is, is that any water treatment plant that we put in has to be. An approved water treatment plant approved through the Oregon Health Authority. I just can't, we just can't put, get put in a filter plant that's not approved. Um, and th- there are honestly not that many manufacturers that. Do this thing anymore. Especially when we were limited to having something that was temporary. Um, you know, we could order something and have somebody build something and they can make it bigger. And. But that just, that just did, didn't really, you know, that didn't fit the thing. I mean. We can provide like, you know, pressure filters and all that stuff, but like I said, those don't meet the requirements. Of the enhanced surface water treatment rule and. Oregon Health Authority is not going to allow those. Also, the funding agencies would never pay for something like that.
Counselor Engel.
That's real.
Go, sorry, go ahead, Rob.
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, Counselor Engel.
Well, it's important that we thank you for calling me. It's important that we finish hearing what. Um, Rob has to say because what he's saying is what we have known since September. We, we as a city council. Have known all of these facts since September and they were made aware to us. And we did agree and make this choice so that we could have a water treatment plant quickly into the town. We did look at the water lines coming from Idana. And nobody liked it. Nobody thought it was a good idea and nobody would pay for it. So we have been there and we've killed that dog. And that's why we are doing what we're doing now. But most importantly, we are totally out of parliamentary procedure. We are, there is a talk on the, on the agenda. To review number five and we have wandered far away and we need to come back and close the discussion on number five. And these discussions about. Other plants, other systems are for another day and another discussion and we need. To circle back and finish this discussion.
Okay. Counselor Shepherd.
Uh, what is the deadline for putting in for this grant, this million dollar grant?
It's in, it's in now. They've, uh, they're in the process of, uh, reviewing the contract. Uh, to issue the grant, but it is on the terms of what we've submitted, uh, through HPH.
Okay. I, I was concerned if we, if we start work on the temporary plant before we get the grant and if for some reason it doesn't get approved. Then, uh, how are we going to pay for that? What? Say we have three weeks of work and, or a month's worth of work and then we find out we don't get the grant, then where are we?
Matt, you've been kind of in some of those, a lot of those meetings.
Yeah. And so I, I guess I can. Answer that as, as best as I can, I can, and I hope it's the right time to answer that. Um. So. Ultimately, yes, uh, this would open the city up to some risk and. I, I, I can't make that decision. All, all I can do is try and. Provide you guys with as much information as I can to make you guys comfortable with whatever decision you wind up making. A, a little bit of this is, you know, we, we, we talked about our options, uh, back in October, I think it was, or September. And w- we chose a path because in order for anything to happen, we had to pick one. And we picked the path that seemed like the least resistance from the funding agencies at that time. I can tell you, I, I had our designs on this temporary treatment plant done in late November and ready to be bid on. I had a contractor onboard, ready to install this thing in early December. And I had West Tech ready to ship the equipment out in, at the end of December. And ultimately, you know, what it all came down to is we've been doing this engineering work. But I can't ask a contractor to spot the city five hundred thousand dollars. Um, I can't ask West Tech to main, to, to ship out their equipment that's two hundred thousand dollar equipment. Without any way of paying. And, and so the, the hangup has been, where does this money come from? And, and that we selected USDA because they would be faster than. Really, I guess our three options were USDA. FEMA or the city's insurance money. And the city has that extra expense fund of a million dollars, but really any, anything we did to provide temporary water. To the city would eat up almost the entirety of that extra expense fund, leaving the city without the extra expense fund to cover. Other critical items around town. So. We could have done that and the money would have come faster, but then we would have been kind of just pushing the buck down the line of, okay, now how do we pay for these other? Critical expenses around the city. Um, when we had, and, and FEMA is typically years out on getting money. Reimbursed to cities. So we would have had to find a loan that would pay for this work upfront that FEMA could then somewhere down the line reimburse. Or that left us with USDA and USDA was set, claimed they would be quick. Um, they are not. As quick as we initially were told they would be. To release funds is still relative towards FEMA. They are faster than FEMA. Um, but ultimately. We're kind of at the mercy of. USDA being the fastest available source of funds. Um, we, the reason we can start construction now without. Using any USDA funds is that because part of this rebuild that we're doing in this proposed project. Will be reutilized as the city's permanent water treatment plant building in the future. So because we're constructing the permanent building as part of this project, we can pull some of the city's insurance money. That would have gone to rebuilding that building in the future, but unfortunately, since the water treatment plant wasn't in the old building that burned. But unfortunately, since the water treatment plant wasn't in the old building that burned, the insurance won't in, as part of that funding, won't pay for a new treatment plant. And they won't pay for the new piping. So they, basically, they will only pay for building related expenses. Um, so until we have USDA's commitment on the money, we would have to focus on the building side of things. And if we didn't focus on the building side of things and we focused on the water side of things, which is an option, that does open up the city to some risk of what happens if, because uh, uh, the USDA application is approved, but not funded. So there's, there is that risk of what happens if funding falls through. And that has happened before with USDA. That's a very, that's a real thing. So the alternative is if that situation were to arise, I guess the city has two options. We can wait until USDA funds, um, but now we're talking about waiting until USDA funds the project or we can start early. And the city would have to acknowledge that risk of the loan, of the grant falling through. And in the event that the grant falls through, we've already been working with FEMA to establish a project number for the temporary water supply, a temporary water treatment plant. Um, so FEMA is operating kind of as a backup plan is where we have FEMA. So if USDA falls through, we would then fall on the FEMA project number. We would work with Business Oregon to open a special public works loan, bridge loan, that would provide funding for the temporary water treatment plant. And I've already spoken to Michelle Billbury and she said they would be open to doing this. Um, and then when FEMA comes in with their money later on down the line, they would reimburse that special public works bridge loan. And the twenty-five percent of the project cost that FEMA doesn't cover, the special public works bridge loan would be converted to a special public works grant for twenty-five percent to be the local match for FEMA. So that would be the backup option. So we do have a backup plan. But I, I can't pretend that it's not without risk starting before USDA funds. Um, so those are really the two options that we have.
So I'm gonna, Counselor Luke, one time, real quick.
Yeah, just directly with that, um.
You have a phone call coming in.
Which is what this is um about, uh, this meeting and so forth. That, that right there was, is my biggest concern. And so um, it's nice to hear that there's a FEMA, there's a project number and a, and a FEMA backup. But if we, if we approve. And.
You're breaking up, Tim.
If we approve this and we start and it doesn't come through, um, then we're on the hook to pay the people that have done this stuff. And we're a really bad customer uh because we don't have the money any other way than to wait. And so um, the question to clarify directly related to this meeting and approve or not is um, you know, HPH, where are you going to be with us if that happens? Where is the contractor going to be with us if that happens? Um, a- and so forth. And I know they said they'd be fast about it and they haven't been. But do we actually have any feeling, is this most likely going to be funded in a week or two? Or could it actually more likely than not take a month or two or so forth? Because we got to get water to people, but we can't put our city in risk for that financially to be bankrupt or sued. Um, so forth too. So those are the direct questions that I would need answered to know where I would go, whether to approve or not and to, to start early as much as I want to. I, I don't want to put us at huge risk. And as our attorney looked at that and made a comment of the risk involved there because doesn't seem like if there's that much risk is what I'm hearing, that his attorney would say there's, he doesn't see any problem with it. So I'm not an attorney, but those, you know, that's, tho- those are my biggest concerns.
Our attorney looked at the contract. He sees no problem with it. Uh, that, that came out. He gave a preliminary one, I guess, last week. He did, I talked to him today. Uh, he said he, he was emailing uh his, his uh opinion and that, that opinion still is that there is no problem with the contract with HPH. Um, and, and, and go from there. So I guess that's really what we're, we're not talking about at, at this point, anything happening other than we're providing HPH the contract to continue to pursue the USDA grant. And again, what they have said is it has been approved, but it has not been dispersed pending approval of the contract, which they're looking at now. Um, and they, they said, uh, when they first looked at me in the meeting was with them, with them last week, they said, uh, and we, we're gonna, when they said thirty days to look at it, I looked at them and they said that doesn't necessarily mean that's how long it's going to take. Um, they're, they're pushing uh for that. Um, I had a conversation with Congressman Schrader. He's contacted them saying, please don't take thirty days. And so we have people pushing on that end of it. So right now, the only thing we really are concerned about is not how we're going to do all this stuff. It's are we going to approve a contract with the city which would allow them continue uh working with you at USDA to try and get this grant uh for temporary? Because as they've said, that's all they're going to approve is a temporary fix. Um, and, and as Counselor Angle said, we, we did talk about this in October uh and came up with this, the size of a plant that was available. And that was uh what we came up with. So it was, has been talked about with counsel. So again, our, our only thing here today is to, are, do we want to approve the contract with HPH to meet the USDA requirement so that we can move forward? Because they will not go forward without that contract in place.
Shelley's got her hand up.
Oh, Shelley, I'm sorry. I keep looking for, you're up in the corner.
Ah, um, two quell concerns that Counselor Luke may have was we read, did receive documentation from the city attorney this morning at eight fifteen AM stating that he had seen the contract and reviewed it. He had made some changes or changes that he wanted to see. Um, they were made and Matt responded with the proper contract with all of them changes made that Bill Manna had had made along with the statement that he approved of the contract and felt that we could move forward. Um, so you do have an email stating that um as of this morning. And I defer to Commissioner Page. He has had his hand up for.
I'm sorry, Gary. I hate this little hand thing. Go ahead, Counselor Page.
Um, I, I initially uh felt that we maybe, uh, as I had said earlier, that maybe we needed some more time for conversation about this. Um, which, um, you know what? We've uh, we, we seem to have um spent a fair bit of ti- doing, we almost have done a work session on this thing. And I believe there's a little more uh daylight in this thing at this point. Um, so I just have a couple more questions about H, with HPH, um, especially since they're apparently in not much of a paid position. Uh, but uh, questions related to, uh, you need to be in contract um with the city to get this grant. Is that, am I saying that correctly, Rob? Or Matt?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Rob.
Okay, so, so we're in contract with the city as a city engineer. But we have to have this contract for design that meets the USDA requirements. And obviously, you guys have seen how long that contract is. Frankly, I think, you know, I think it's absurdly long. Um, and, but it's one of those things where that's their form, that's their rules. We have no choice. Um, but yeah, so before we can do, before we can get the construction funding for the, before we can get the construction funding, we have to have the engineering contract signed first. Now, we can get reimbursed for work that's been done under the, on the engineering. But we cannot start any construction until the engineering contract is signed.
And the, your uh design and uh construction um management side of this, USDA has already set what your uh essential fee uh or what you're going to get paid for that. They've, they've set the bar on that.
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right. Well, I think that gives me a little better clarity on this particular portion of the contract. Um, and I feel a little bit uh more at ease about making million dollar decisions for the city. And I feel that um, uh, especially the fact that Bill was able to weigh in on this, uh, which I was able to read that. Uh, even with the, the short amount of time that we have been able to um muddle through um, it, what would be um, an unbelievable amount of documentation for anybody. Um, I, I would have to say I would make a motion that we would move forward with that uh contract.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, Counselor Page, second Counselor Tezdale, to approve the contract with HPH uh with the city of Detroit for uh, the given plant. Um, further discussion.
Um, can I say something real quick, Jim? Uh, so.
Shelley, we're gonna vote.
Oh, well, all right.
Thank you.
I was gonna try to tell you something, but go ahead.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And I, I think some of the questions that Counselor Luke and, and every Counselor Shepherd especially have made are things we can't look at um, uh, and go from there. But this at least keeps us going down the road. I hate to see a million dollars go away.
Yeah, and, and Jim, Shelley, th- th- thank you for affording me that. Shelley, I understand we're out of parliamentary procedure. I only went there. And, and so I think did Shat because of all the pressure and such a, such a huge decision right now. And we really needed to, to clarify some of that stuff because just like, like Eric said, it, it, it re- uh, Counselor Page just said it, it really helped me too uh to, to see, you know, a.
Good, great.
Phone call, Tim. Okay, and so um, Counselor, Counselor Page, you, you'd made a motion to go to a work se- or Counselor Tezdale made a motion to go to a work session on this.
That was me.
Could you withdraw your motion?
I can, and I can. I, I will withdraw uh moving this into a, a work session prior to the vote. So I withdraw that initial motion.
Thank you. Okay, and then, I, number six, review and approve of the O-L, Olson OLCC contract with the city of Detroit. Rob, just very quickly explain what that contract, what they're going to be doing. Can you?
So that, yeah, why don't Matt, why don't, why don't we have Matt do that?
Yeah, um, so basically, that's their contract for construction. And that really, we're just seeking authorization to issue a notice of award to them and also to sign their contract, not necessarily immediately, but have authorization to sign it. Um, and then also to host a pre-construction meeting. And so basically, that's just, they're, they're the ones that are having the contract to both install the temporary treatment plant, the piping, clean up the building and put a roof over the building and complete construction on the, the treatment plant building itself. Um, so that's kind of, their work is contained to that water treatment plant site.
Tim, good, Counselor Shepherd.
Uh, yeah, is this something where maybe we should consider maybe getting a couple more bids for something like this?
I think we're past that. We're.
We'll pass that.
You think we're past that. Counselor Angle, sorry. You're muted.
Um, yes, we had, this is an emergency that we don't have to do bids. That's why we're able to process this right away, that we've been granted permission to not have to put this out to bid due to the fact that we're in an emergency situation. Uh, I think Matt and Rob, I think I said that right, that that's, that's where we are with that. Um, I, I do have a comment about the contract and the expectation by the city councilors. This is what I had printed up today and it's three hundred pages. It's almost an entire ream of paper to, to try to make the effort to review this contract. Um, I knew, I knew that it wasn't extraordinarily important that we review it because it was kind of already a done deal. But in the future, it cannot be on the backs of city councilors to have two, well, really a half a day because you, you really can't expect them to be doing this on the weekends, to review a three hundred page contract and have to print it out themselves. I have a bill of eighty-five dollars to have this printed today. And we just need to plan better in the future and these need to be submitted, sent to us in a way that we can mark them up, that we can ask questions, that we can highlight and that we have two to three weeks to review them and that we have city ma- city mayors and or a staff report on how to move forward when the, when the contract is ready to be reviewed and, and voted on. Um, thank you.
Counselor Page.
Um, Matt, um, can you, so since we're looking at approving um this Olson LLC contract and I understand what the scope of that project's all about, uh, and we're doing this um a little bit by the seat of our pants since we don't have any competing bids. What assurances uh that a- a- as our acting city engineering firm and the representatives uh of, of the city in, in regards to tha- that portion of the project, what assurances can you give us as a council that um this company is um a company that we can uh put confidence in with the project for uh efficiency, um, speed, um, and something that is being competitive um out there in the, in, in the real world related to this type of thing? Uh, we can't go down the rosy path that we have with RL. We still have a, enough of a problem with that portion of, of, of things with that contractor. Uh, and, and if we're going to approve a contract that is not going through the formal process with us enacting the emergency position on this, w- we have only one thing to fall back on. It's either delay this and go to Marion County and say, we need all of your help to review this to give us as councilors um some legal room and not get sued because we did the wrong thing, which is really important that we keep things moving. So we need a, some assurances from you that we're, we're going in the right direction using our emergency position on this. Because otherwise, we have to go to the county or go somewhere else to get some sort of backing on this uh for everybody's sake, including the taxpayer.
Yeah, and, and absolutely. So essentially, what it came down to, a- and I don't want you guys to feel like we're pushing one way or another. I actually, I don't have any problem going out and getting multiple bids on this. The thought process behind not doing so um is that we have Olson LLC. They are, uh, for those of you who may or may not be familiar, they're actually the contractor that installed the water treatment plant for the city of Idana over the summer. And that water treatment plant is, the equipment in it is very, very similar to the temporary equipment that we're putting in, in Detroit. And so that was a big driving factor. One, there was a positive experience with them. They, they worked very well with the city um to adjust to the city's needs and make sure things that the city wanted to see done were included at minimal cost. And two, we were able to take their bids or their estimate that they've given to us and compare it to their bid from the work in Idana. And obviously, the two projects are different. I mean, they're, they're very different at this point, but there's enough similar components that we could look at those and say, okay, you did this work in Idana and you're also doing that same work here in Detroit and compare the costs that they gave in Idana, which was competitively bid, and the cost they gave for Detroit. And to this point, those costs, their estimate that they provided was almost identical, which. And to this point, those costs, their estimate that they provided was almost identical, which really it shouldn't be because there has been a little bit of inflation between then and now. So just comparing their estimate with the competitive bid proposal they gave in Idana showed that they weren't gouging any prices. It was all in line with what they would support in a competitive manner. And also doing so, they were very familiar with the equipment. So I I knew that they knew the work that had to be done. And as such, we can issue a little bit more of a streamlined set of of design drawings. So we don't have to go through a long process, a lengthy design that could take months. I I mean, at this point, we've kind of fine tuned some things. So we've we've shaved some time off of there. But if this were a competitively bid process, we probably would be having a little bit more detailed plans just to make sure that no, the the bidders on it were looking at the same pieces of information and there wasn't gray areas on it. Whereas with this contractor, they just did the work. So we know that they know what they're doing.
Thanks. That was good, good, good information.
Further discussion.
I have something to say, Mayor Tret, this.
Can't see your hand with with your background there.
It's hiding my bed. Okay, so Matt, thanks for that explanation. It's making us all feel better. I get some questions. Has Olson LLC ever done work for the City of Detroit?
Yes.
Other than this?
Yes, they are the contractor that installed the water meters.
Okay, and then were there any complaints about the water meters? I know that I looked when, you know, we lived there full time and 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 some of the water meters weren't backfilled appropriately and they're crooked and some were off the property line. I'm just wondering if you guys, if anybody had any complaints about that. I'm just hoping for high quality work. And and so I was wondering if you guys had any complaints or if or Mayor Tret, if you heard any.
I I got a couple where the meter was in backwards from one resident who tried to fix it and couldn't. But I I know it was passed on to them and I understand it was fixed appropriately quickly. Matt, can you address that or Rob?
I'll actually defer that one to Kenny. He.
Oh, Kenny?
In charge of the meter project.
Kenny, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, raising my hand.
There you are. Okay, thank you.
So first thing is that the crews I'd be installing the meters and the crew that'd be installing the treatment plants are different. I would say that it wasn't quite what I was expecting from Highland, but what they are very good at is responding to concerns. And so I told them things I wanted to be fixed and they were fixed promptly. So I have every reason to believe that they will do a very competent job. But also, meter installation and water treatment installation, very different.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I have.
I didn't.
Go ahead, just Tezdale, go ahead.
I I just didn't know if it'd be the same crew, the same type of work. That's why I was asking. Thanks, Kenny.
Thank you. Counselor Page?
Uh, well, just a comment on Kenny. He just said Highland. We're talking about Olson. I, did I, did I miss something here?
Mm-hmm.
Kenny, go ahead.
Sorry about that. The two companies are related. Olson LLC is who I was referring to.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, that being said, so we've got two companies that are related on separate phases of the project. Is that have they given full disclosure on that?
Rob?
Full disclosure to who? To us or to?
I would, I would think to the city and the, I mean, if they're this, I mean, don't they have to disclose that they're a related company?
Well, I don't know if they do or not, but they have disclosed that. We knew that, you know, we've known that all along. As far as, I mean, they're basically there, it's two almost unrelated things, though. One of them's for operations and 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 that company Highland is an operations company. And Olson LLC is a construction company. They're brothers that run the the two different companies. So.
Counselor Luke?
That would have been helpful, Rob, just so you know, because I actually found out on my that out on my own. And it and and it, just being completely transparent and honest, it was very suspicious to me.
Right.
And and so are they in any way, shape or form related to HPH? Are you guys connected at all? Is there anything there that needs disclosure?
We've we have done, we've done work for Highland for some of their water systems in the past. So that that's basically where there would be some connection and that's because we're in Newburgh like and they're located in Newburgh as well.
Sure, and that that would be, that would be good because you worked with them. But I just wondered if there was any ties, otherwise business wise. Would want to make sure that there's nothing there, you know, because that wouldn't be good.
Yeah, no, my brother doesn't work for either one or any of that stuff. So, yeah, we have, we have no, we have no business ties other than we've done some engineering for them.
Okay.
Kenny?
I I apologize for any confusion I caused. To reiterate, Highland and Olson LLC, their workloads do not overlap whatsoever. Olson LLC is purely the construction side. Highland occasionally contracts from Olson LLC to do work. They are business separate entities, to be completely clear. I apologize for any confusion I caused.
Okay, further discussion?
That was helpful. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the contract with Olson LLC to build the water treatment plant building.
Motion, Counselor Engel, second?
I'll second that.
Counselor Page, seconds. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving the contract with Olson LLC with the City of Detroit signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Discuss and approve the flushing of the water phase two water distribution lines. Rob or Matt, whoever, or Kenny?
Um, I I can start with that. So at issue, yeah, is are the lines that RNG put in, and we've had this discussion numerous times in the council meetings, that FEMA has expressed skepticism as to whether or not the city's responsibility, the city has responsibility for those lines. And the concern would be that if the city flushes those lines, then there could be potential VOCs, the benzene specifically, moved from the part of the the lines that the city had completed construction on way before this summer, way before phase two, moved into that. And then if those lines were damaged and had to be replaced, who would pay to replace that? So we submitted documents and waited for FEMA's legal team to look at the contract and look at FEMA's rules and all that. And the response they gave us was pretty much, we're not sure. Which is extremely frustrating for us and I'm frustrating for, I mean, us as HPH and frustrating for us as the city. Because essentially, we were holding off flushing those lines, waiting on a decision from FEMA and then they gave us a non-decision. And I understand where they're coming from. It's a not a, it's a complicated thing, especially when you're not relying on standard engineering practice and the standard construction practice when you're just trying to look at your rules that don't really cover every situation. Then, at the same time, they say, don't wait on us. You need to flush those lines and get moving. And I agree with that second part. I think this is a decision that the city council has to make, knowing that there is some level of risk. However, if that level of risk is not accepted, I guess, then the city will never move forward on having water to those sections of the city. I hope I was fairly clear on that. So what we're looking from the council is a decision as to whether or not have us go ahead and flush those those lines so we can get the city back up and running with at least non-potable water, water.
Counselor Luke?
Rob, yeah, we've been hearing this and hearing this, you know, I'm not harping on you, but last week or week before, you or somebody had said that they were just at Congressman Schrader's office and his assistant was making a phone call, maybe it was you, Mayor Tret, to the financial attorney of FEMA to say, we need an answer. And and so in what I hearing that from that phone call, they gave us again an indefinite answer?
Rob?
Correct.
Or did we even get an answer?
We got an answer, but the answer was full of, I guess. Call them wiggle wiggle words and wiggle phrases. It's, it's, yeah, so, yeah, they gave us an answer, but it was a non-answer and it was, it's, yeah, incredibly frustrating.
Well, with that, with as long as it's been, I make a motion to flush those things. I've felt that way even before I was on council for months. I've been waiting for the opportunity to make a motion to flush those dang lines.
Have a motion, Counselor Luke, to go ahead and flush the lines?
I'll second that. This is Counselor Tezdale.
Counselor Tezdale, seconds. Discussion?
Kenny, you had your hand up?
Oh, Kenny, I'm sorry.
If there's a motion, I will withhold until there is a need for me to say.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion, okay.
Counselor Page?
You're muted.
You're you're muted, Eric.
You, hang on, there we are, sorry. I have a question before we move forward with that. My question would be is, and this is for anybody with HPH. Yeah, I don't care who answers it. Are, were these lines pressure tested? And was RL's work related to those lines? Was everything from their side of things complete and what was the status of those lines prior to the fire? So we know what we're stepping into. And I believe this question's been asked before. I just need it reiterated to me.
Yeah, um, yes, they were, the lines were pressure tested, leak tested. The thing that was waiting on them was the trench patching, the fixing of the road. The lines themselves were were complete.
So what it, so are we bearing the risk? Let let's just assume everything is fine, but the trench patching and compaction done, gets done after the fact. Where do we stand if if they, if it passes muster? And then we go in to do that and the compaction or whatever wasn't correct? And those lines fail because of that after the fact? Where do we stand related to that? Or was the compaction complete?
Yeah, so the compaction was complete. It was just the road, the the patching was not complete. That being said, all of those lines, I mean, the project is not complete, so the one year pro, one year warranty on that. So as soon as the project is complete, like basically paving is done, then the one year warranty will start. So if there's a failure on their lines anytime through that period and through the one year warranty, they have to come out and fix that. Or we hire somebody and try backcharge them if they refuse to.
Thank you.
So I have a motion, Counselor Engel, I believe. Second counsel Tez, or Counselor Luke, I'm sorry. Motion, Counselor Luke, second counsel Tezdale to go ahead and flush the lines, water distribution lines. Further discussion?
Kenny, you had your hand up?
Oh, Kenny, I'm sorry. Your picture's real small.
It is okay. I just want to clarify something that Rob had. There is one water line that was not, well, there were two water lines that weren't completely complete before the fire. There's Front Avenue, which had not yet been pressure tested. Then there was Clifford or, yeah, Clifford, where not everything had been backfilled. And actually, in Clifford, that is the only location where I'm aware that water services physically burned and had to be replaced. So those, I think that those both should be better clarified.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, I have to do something. Not really going. We have a problem with what was something we did last time and that's the awarding of the contract for the for the website. And because I voted positive, I have to, I have to move to reconsider the vote upon which the contract was awarded. Contract services obtained the City of Detroit's website, Lori Gatley. I voted in favor of the award of awarding the contract, yeah, like. And the reason for that, if I could before, I guess, for a second, is I was made aware after. I was made aware after the, close your door, please.
Yeah.
Thank you. Made aware after the meeting that when we allowed Lori to speak, we're asking for trouble because we did not offer the same, make the same offer to to the other applicants. And so my, what my hope here is that I I have to do this in good conscience. And then, but I would also go to the February ninth meeting where everybody would be given that opportunity to give a presentation and then answer questions from council and then a revote. So for that reason, I I think I have to make this motion.
I'll second that motion.
Second counsel Engel, discussion?
If I may, because because we sat in that meeting, all of us are essentials. A lot of things came to light while I sat in that meeting and I made a lot of notes about that because I was concerned about how that meeting, how that went and and that we did not follow parliamentary procedure. And so I wanted to just go through a few things that came to mind. First of all, we didn't follow parliamentary procedure. There was no presentation made of the different five companies that were presenting. We were never given the information about how much money we had to spend on the contract. All of the facts were not in place that we needed to know. There was no opportunity again to discuss each of the applications. And the other fi, four companies were not also afforded an opportunity to sit in and listen. And so if you afford it to one, you have to afford it to all five. And and that, so like I said, sitting through that meeting made thing, a lot of things come clear to me about what what happened wrong in regards to parliamentary procedure and appropriate awarding of a contract by a city. Thank you, Mayor Tret.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. That will be on the February ninth agenda. We will contact all five and make them aware that they have the opportunity to make a presentation to go from there. We have one more.
Mayor Tret, if I can, I think what, I think what we need, we need no one to make a presentation that is an owner of a company. We neither need either a staff person to make the presentation or one of us to make the presentation with none of the, in this case, the website people in in attendance. I believe, I might be wrong. I believe, I might be wrong, but I believe that, again, am I wrong?
I think it can be anybody they want to have make that presentation, doesn't it? If they want it to be themselves, or if they want it to be their web developer, that would be, to me, the best, their choice. I don't think there's anything in rule that says it has to be.
Okay.
Counselor Luke?
I just wanted to weigh in. It, it was me that asked a question of Lori, that it was doing the website. Right or wrong with her and I asked her to weigh in on the past experiences of why and what had been going on to, you know, clarify, give more clarity to why things were, were the way they were, up to the point of her submitting a proposal even long before any RFP or RFQ or any of that went out, which is, is why I asked her for that. So.
And I don't think it was a deliberate attempt on anybody's here. I think we just kind of got that, we went down that road. And I, I apologize, I didn't catch it, but it was just kind of. So, thank you, but we will put that on the February ninth ballot and make sure we've done it right.
Mayor Tret, one last thing with that. There were other issues on this whole situation, and if we want to be public, I think those should be addressed. We can't, we're, we're scrutinizing a website more than we scrutinized $1 million. And the fact that Counselor Ingle wants to bring it up again, I think the whole thing should be disclosed. It may need to be in an executive session. So I think we need to be fair and honest about this situation.
Yeah. Well, we'll talk to, I'll talk to legal counsel and see what the best way to go with that is.
Okay, thank you.
We want to do this right. And then I forgot, Renata from Cog would like to have a few words. So Renata, I don't see you anywhere. There you are.
Hi, everyone. For those that may not know, we are new to the council. I'm the Community Development Director at Council of Governments. We provide legal counsel and planning services to our members, your member government. We are considered an extension of your staff in that you can sign intergovernmental agreements with us if you so choose for some services. I know that the council and city staff have been working closely with Marion County, who's doing their best to support all of the work that you, as a council and your city staff have to do. I believe it was Wednesday last week, Mayor, when we were on a call with the County Board of Commissioners. They are working and it, they've also asked that, you know, Cog support you all in identifying any and all funding we can find to support your city staff. It's states and feds do not like to fund what are considered general city services. But your city staff, I think, as you know, have a lot on their plates. So Marion County's county administrator with direction from the Board of Commissioners has asked to sign a contract with Cog to just support city staff as best we can and what we have the capacity to do. So I reached out to Kelly. I don't want to, you know, overstep or take any, you know, make any assumptions about what assistance is needed. Kelly and I had a conversation today about where she could use some help in her mind. And I, I would, you know, welcome any comments from the council. But items such as, you know, continued planning services, building permit reviews when that time comes, help in finance such as water billings and mailings, which we typically do for your planning services anyway. Mayor Tret, if you would like any assistance with the coronavirus relief fund and that procurement and working with DAS on that. Minutes is what Kelly, so as, as long as the council's okay with that, we have a temp staff who is already assisting in our finance department that can increase her hours. So we can provide minute services that helps alleviate some of, you know, the, the many tasks that are on Kelly's plate and others and some grant writing services. So I just wanted to present that information to you, see if you had any questions for me. Again, the funding is coming from Marion County. It's their lottery dollars. They did put a not to exceed $10,000 on that and it only go, it goes till June, at which point the county continues to try to support you all with money coming from the legislature, emergency board and such. But this is seen as a temporary adjustment to provide support to your staff. So if, you know, I, I'm, I'm here for questions. I, I'm hopeful that Marion County and, you know, your state representatives will be able to identify and uncover more funding for you guys. But, but we're here to be an extension of your staff.
And again, a conversation that this is supposed to be temporary and hopefully the state will step up in the next, in this current session and provide some long-term relief for, for staffing. Counselor, Congressman Schrader was in Detroit on Friday and that was part of my ask for him is if there's another relief package from Congress, that that include states or cities and small government, or city, small, sorry, cities and counties. So hopefully, if there is more coming from, from Congress, we would be specifically identified as a small city. So any other questions or comments for Renata?
I'm just gonna say, thank you.
Yeah. Big thank you to Marion County Commissioners because they just said, we're not waiting for the state anymore. We're gonna come up with those lottery dollars. The only other thing I'm gonna, I got a call today.
Jim, can I say something real quick? It's tied in with Renata, but she said, you know, many of us were participating in that recent LOC training, you know, for the canyon. And they kept repeating high-level staff and we need a high-level staff. And I know that I, I have gone to the city and asked a lot of questions and, and I get told that, you know, there's not enough time for this and that. So a high-level staff for us to.
Excuse me?
No, 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 no. Kelly, this is not, no. Remember the city manager and the training they're talking about instead of always going to the recorder? That when we go to the higher level, then we don't bother them with their work hours. What I mean at high level is their term, not mine. I took notes. And so then we wouldn't be bothering the city staff. They could do their own work. And I just really think it's a good idea because then, then everybody's job description is fulfilled without, you know, me being a newbie constantly asking questions and being told.
Thank you. The, the thing I was gonna bring up, I, I received a call from Sherry Springer, who was just retired as our representative for the Oregon Legislature. She was in Detroit last Saturday and bought some donated items and was approached by a citizen. And that citizen told her that she had heard that Wyndham, the resort conglomerate, was trying to buy a property in Detroit and that the water system was not being repaired to make it easier for them to make people want to sell. I, and she asked me, what have you heard? I said, I have not heard anything about Wyndham trying to come into our community. And we wouldn't be slowing down water back to the computer, back to people to make it happen. So I'm hoping, unless somebody says, yes, I've heard, that's what's gonna happen. If you hear it, please knock it in the head. And go from there. And that's probably something we should be aware of. These rumors are floating around and if we hear them, we need to get on top of them very, very quickly.
Did you ask her where she heard it?
She said it was just a lady who came up to her when she was handing out stuff in the city. She didn't have a name. Didn't hear it. She wasn't given a name. It was just somebody, she said, that's what she'd heard and she was concerned. I'm, my intent is I'm going to write a little release about that and have it put up on the website, send that out to the social media stuff and say, if you hear this rumor, it is, there is no, it's not founded in fact. So it's just to be aware. With that.
Garrett has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Garrett? Garrett, you're muted.
Gosh, I'm just keeping it muted. All right, a couple of days ago, I did have contact with a female up there that was suffering from some mental illness. I think that might be where that came from. But we ended up, I ended up giving her a ride back to Gate. So I don't know if that's her or not, but just so you know.
Okay. We'll still put out, we'll still put out that release, just, just to be sure. And with that said, I will adjourn this special session of the Detroit City Council for Monday, February first, 2021 at four forty-five. We are scheduled to have a work session to actually discuss funding. Maybe we can get into more of what we were doing. But ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna take about five minutes. So if we could go till, come back at four fifty. So some of us can take little breaks that we need right now. Because I'm old. Okay, so we are adjourned. We will cons- spend the work session at four fifty. Thank you.
Kelly, I'm gonna go try and get on my computer, get off this phone. Hey, Colin? Remember last week that Jacob Westcott called about his frame that is for the tributary? And I told him it'd be done this week, which is fine. I've been on a Zoom meeting since two o'clock. He is blown up my phone because he's in town from Ben and he's mad. He said he went to my business and it's not open because he obviously went to the old address. My goodness.
Okay. I've got, four, four, yeah, it's everybody's ready. We'll go ahead and get started. This is a work session. I'm gonna call that to order at four forty-nine to discuss funding, which we did earlier. So maybe a lot of this has already been handled. But we do have it on the books. So Rob, if you want to try to tell us what your thoughts are here. Start us. You're muted.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, so basically what we wanted to do is kind of just touch on all the funding stuff that we've kind of danced around and, and been, you know, talked about, but hadn't really all pulled it together as far as the funding for the, the water system stuff that we've been talking about. Matt really covered that pretty well in the, in the regular council session. But I think we kind of want to just explain where all this money's coming from so that the council is basically at ease. And I, I don't know that there's any decisions that need to be made. And obviously in a work session, we can't make decisions. But I, I just felt like it was necessary for us to have this discussion with, with the council. And, and I'm gonna have, go ahead and let Matt kind of lead that discussion. I hope you're okay with that, Matt, as long as you're still here.
Yeah. So I, I guess really there's, and, and there's actually one other piece that Kenny might chime in on. But in relation to the water system, there's three big funding pieces. There's insurance, FEMA and USDA. USDA, we're trying to utilize as much of as we can to do temporary water system, bring water back to the city so that we can save as much of that extra expense fund as possible for things the city needs to address around town. Insurance will chip, chip into the treatment plant along the way, where it can. But like I mentioned before, unfortunately, insurance can't pay for the new treatment equipment, new piping, things like that. It can only pay for what was in the controls building before the fire. So I, I guess that's the big thing. And, and when you get into Olson LLC's contract, we're just gonna have to be very good about tracking and I'll do my best. I'll work with you guys and Kelly. Because I tried to separate out in that bid schedule, in that contracted section zero zero four one one. I tried to separate out individual line items that would be paid for a hundred percent by USDA or a hundred percent by insurance that we wouldn't be mixing and matching any line items. Part of one line item go, coming from one funding source, part from another. Because it's gonna be very important that we keep those funding sources separate. And one of the requirements with USDA is that we spend any insurance money first. Now, we only have insurance money to pay for the building. So we just need to be very careful that anything building related, insurance has to pay for that beforehand. Now, if something happens and USDA funds come out of USDA to pay for insurance, insurance items, that's okay. You'll just have to reimburse the USDA funds with your insurance, basically swap them back. But we'll, we'll try and be very upfront and clear about everything so we don't have to run into that situation. And so we'll work with city staff to do that. And then elsewhere around town, there's the distribution system that will have some work done. And that actually, so USDA wants to chip in another $150,000 to take care of distribution system repairs. We haven't started that application yet. I've really been trying to focus more so on getting water back to the city. But now that I think we've got a little bit of a better path forward on the treatment plant, we can start opening up that distribution application with USDA as well. So we've got that for the distribution system repairs. Other, we cannot use any insurance money to pay for anything relating to the distribution system. Unfortunately, that was not part of the city's insurance policy. So all of that work, if there's any work that needs to be done on the distribution system, will need to be paid for by. distribution system, will need to be paid for by either USDA or FEMA. And so we, we've been working, we've been having weekly work sessions with FEMA to break out all of the different projects around town. And that, that expands beyond just the water system. But we're working with them to create project numbers, so that anything in the distribution system at Brighton Bush or Mackey Intakes, those are addressed and covered by a FEMA project. And I, I think, well, Kenny, I don't know if you've got some input on the distribution side of things in regards to FEMA work, or?
I do. I don't know if we want to get to that immediately. If you want, if we want to transition to that, I can discuss it a bit. But maybe we stay with the treatment plant for a little bit first.
Yeah. So, so I guess the, the big thing that I just kind of want the city to be aware of is, with the treatment plant, is we've kind of pushed this along as far as we can. And we're kind of at a point where, and I apologize if this can't happen during the, someone just cut me off, if we can't say this now. But basically, we've pushed USDA to the point where there's only so much we can do, right? I, I mean, we've pushed them along to the application, but now they're kind of, the ball's in their court of they're reviewing the contracts. And legally, they're allowed thirty days to review the contracts. Part of USDA's grant is that they can reimburse the city for costs that the city incurred six months before the application date. So with that, I argue to USDA that if the city chooses, and you're not locked into this or have to do this by any means, but i- if the city chooses, we hypothetically should be able to proceed with some construction. And USDA would then reimburse those construction expenses, which they have agreed they are eligible to do. But again, as I mentioned in the council meeting, there is a little bit of risk in doing that. So kind of where we're at now is this, just discussing the city's comfort level with waiting versus pushing ahead without USDA concurrents on all of these items, and knowing that there is some risk. So there, there's the two options that we can do. Yeah, there, I guess there's just those two options and just, I, I don't know, I want to feel out the city's comfort level with those options.
Just a quick reminder, in my meeting with them last week, first of all, they, they emphasized that the grant has been approved. But they have to, looking at the contract. So if they came back and said, hey, we don't like something in the contract, they would give us a chance to, to adjust that contract to, to what their needs are.
Correct. And I've spoken.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, I've spoken to Olson and I, I know, I mean, Rob's here, he can say the same thing. If, if there's something in the contract that USDA doesn't like for whatever reason, and said, no, you have this in there wrong, this needs to be changed. Olson doesn't have any issues issuing a, going through a contract amendment. And I, I, for HBH, I mean, Rob, feel free to correct me, as long as it's pretty immaterial. We, we want to make this work at however it needs to, we'll do what needs to be done in order to make this happen. So, you know, everyone's willing to work with the city. I don't think, I mean, I can't speak for USDA, but I, I don't think they'd back out over any small contract language wording issues, so long as it's able to be corrected. I guess my bigger worry with USDA is, even though the application has been approved, it has happened in the past, not to me personally, but that USDA funding has fallen through. So that's why before we even started with this, I reached out to Business Oregon and to FEMA to make sure that all of our ducks were in a row with those two agencies that should something happen with USDA, the city has an alternative. Because at the end of the day, the city needs water, right? I mean, this isn't, this is something that has to be done one way or another, one funding source or another. And so we reached out early to find a plan B in the event that USDA does fall through.
Tim?
Sorry, I, I was sitting here waiting to be let into the meeting for quite some time. So I don't know where we're at or what I missed. I hate to retract, but I was right there waiting.
That's fine, I'm sorry. Basically, we're just talking about, well, Rob, can you summarize?
Yeah, Tim, we pretty much just covered the stuff that we covered during the regular council meeting about how, how the funding is going to work for paying for the temporary water treatment plant. That's pretty much what we've covered so far. So.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, um, I don't know if it'd be Rob or Kenny who could answer this, but when you guys start billing or keeping track of the work hours, does that get submitted to the city financial officer? Or how do you guys work that?
So yeah, so that gets submitted to the, to, you know, it'd been Christine, we submit that to the city. We also have to submit that to whatever funding agency it is, or the insurance company. And they would have to approve any of our time and form and ask any questions that way. It's really not any different than what we did for the, for, do for the water project or anything like that. So it, it, it's not just the city, that also has to have some agency concurrence.
Okay. And then Mayor Tret, does that get put into our packet so we can see that? Because I haven't seen, I, you know, we're looking for information on the budget and, you know, what we pay out for the water project. And I was just wondering how we will be able to see that.
I would assume here that if, if the bill comes to us, and then we have to go to FEMA to get the money, that yes, it would show up in our packet. My, my question would be, if they submit the bill directly to, say, FEMA or USDA, we probably wouldn't see it because it wouldn't come through our account. But I'm assuming, Rob, you tell me if I'm wrong, that you would bill us and send a copy to, say, USDA, we would pay it, and then they reimburse us, you know, they supply us the money, and then we write you a check on the city, and that would show up in our monthly bills payable.
Actually, I get, just to jump in, I, maybe I misunderstood this from the USDA meeting, Jim, last week, but I thought they mentioned that there, basically, there's going to be an account opened up, an interest-bearing account opened up that USDA would deposit the money into.
Yes, that's right.
That the, that the city has access to. So we would submit the bill, I believe it'd go to the city, and you guys would review the bill. But before that gets paid, we still have to get agency concurrence from USDA on basically all, all bills and invoices, whether it be ours, the contractors, anybody's.
So I guess.
Correct.
So Michelle, I'm saying, what I'm saying is, it sounds like, yes, we would see that in our packet.
And then Matt, real quick, sorry, sorry. When, when you guys put the bill in for like the hours worked, or for, for Olson LLC, is that going to be like a per hour? I mean, I did see some of the way in the packet of how you got, how we're charged per hour. Is it, is it a per hour basis for Olson, or is it by project basis?
So for Olson, it's going to be, if in that contract documents, there's section zero zero four one one, that includes this bid schedule. And there will be a price in those line items. Right now, we've got the estimate, but eventually that'll be an actual firm price. And they will bill against those line items.
Okay.
Counselor Page, you have your.
Uh, this might be slightly veering off path, but I, it's a question that's been on my mind. And, and since we're in work session, I want to go there and get it over with. What is the status of the Zipli conduit that was put in the ground post-fire? And where, what is the financial status on that side of things? Can you guys give me some enlightenment on that?
Um, yeah. So RNG has billed that for that. And the city has billed Zipli for that. And Zipli has not paid the city, nor has Zipli paid us for our portion of that.
And what is your portion?
It was a, basically, it was a small thing. So it was a couple thousand dollars for, basically, for inspection when that went in, so that we could, because it could not come out of the water system budget. So we could not charge it as part of the engineering thing. I'm just saying that they've had no contact with us either. And we have reached out to them. And I don't know, Kenny, you might have a little bit more information with that as far as payment on the Zipli, on the Zipli thing, that the payment for RNG's contract.
I mean, I guess I have more, but it's just basically a iteration of, we've, we've reached out to them, I've had Christine reach out to them maybe six times, seven times. They haven't responded. They haven't reviewed anything. They've, I believe that they have at least signed every change order that they were obligated to. But when it comes to putting up money, they've basically been completely unresponsive.
What, 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 how much, I mean, are you, do you know what, what RL is owed for the work for putting the Zipli conduit in?
You mean RNG?
I mean, excuse me, RNG. I'm sorry.
Approximately fifteen thousand dollars plus some amount of interest, since they, all of the payments are late. And the interest is also Zipli's responsibility.
Well, what do we have to do? I mean, were, were you guys? Who is ultimately contractually involved in this thing to get them, to put the squeeze on Zipli to get them to perform? I can't even get them to work with me on my bill for telephone service. So God only knows what it's going to take to get fifteen thousand or however much money out of them.
I could talk to Danielle Gonzalez. She's kind of the leader of that project. Anyway, so I'll, I'll try and, I can get her involved later tonight.
That would be good. Also, just for reference, it is the city and Zipli that went into a agreement for that. The city has some recourse to enforce the contract upon Zipli.
Right. Well, in order for us to hopefully get to a peaceful wrap-up with our water contractor there, we, we need to pursue this and get that whole mess put to bed, I think. So, and whatever assistance you can lend for the city on that, it would be appreciated as well.
I'm not sure what more we can do beyond what we have done. Like I said, we've reached out to them, anyone that we can think of. They just don't seem to be interested in responding.
Yeah, I, I get it.
I will call, contact Danielle Gonzalez as soon as we're done. Rob?
Um, yeah. So one thing that should be noted, and I don't, I mean, I'm not gonna, I don't want to say anything that would need to be said in executive session. However, the, the city does have some pull, and the city engineer can make life a little bit more difficult for Zipli as they move forward with things, if they're not going to cooperate with the, with the city. So far, we've been, the city has always been very friendly with the utility companies that have been, that have had franchise agreements. And you know, not that there could be anything like overly punitive, but I guess the city, this, yeah, the city's always worked very well with that. And, and that's something that they need, that they're going to need to consider. And I have no problem yelling at them whenever needed.
I'll just get Danielle involved with you guys too. Counselor Angle, you answered it up, I did see.
Thank you. I was, I was going to say that I have a, a very close, tight relationship with Danielle as well. And so I think between the two of us, Mayor Tret, we can, we can make something happen. And I do see that, once again, Kenny has his hand up.
I find, just so you know, Eric, you had hearing that, if you look at Kenny's thing, you see the hand there. You, you actually had yours up one time. I was trying to figure out what that decoration was on your wall. So Kenny, go ahead.
Again, without straying into anything that needs to be said in executive session, I do know that with the other outstanding Zipli project, where they're doing the underground installation throughout town, there are some, I'd say, compliance issues in terms of them properly restoring the ground to usable conditions that the city engineer probably could raise with them as well.
Okay. Okay, with that said, is everybody comfortable with, with where the money's coming from for the water? At this point? Have we answered questions between the regular and all that? Counselor Angle? Sorry.
Yeah. I, I have a question, and this is, this is probably for another session or whatever. But I know that Rob and I have been sitting in these FEMA meetings on, on Wednesdays, where Lee Thomas, who is amazing, is showing this, this breakdown of two ways of funding going forward. And part of that funding includes the, the permanent water treatment plant. And so I'm hoping that one of these days soon, maybe that's a city council meeting, maybe it's another work session. But Rob, does that make sense that we, we probably need to come to some conclusions and decisions about that? And Kelly will know this too. Do we need to do this pretty soon?
We need to do this, we need to, I think it was the middle of March, some point, that we needed to have what we, the path that we wanted to go down to, whether it was the straight replacement cost of things, or the alternate method of, of funding. So we can discuss that. I mean, I think, I think, I, I know which way I would recommend that the city go. So.
Well, I would, I would like to, it's not really a motion, but I would like to highly recommend that if we don't do it at the city council meeting in, on this regularly scheduled day, that perhaps we have another session, and it could be a, a work session where we can really nail that down. Because I would like to have it decided before we have to have it decided, you know, so we're ahead of, of them and due dates, because that's going to be another really, really big decision we are going to have to make. I also know that, that we need to make sure that Kelly is talking to our person, our city, community citizen, Kathy Price, who is going to sit down with and look at all the insurance. And, and some of those pieces might be helpful to have Kelly be, and Kathy be aware of before we make that decision, as you're saying, referencing, Rob, this one or that one. I have some great PowerPoints that I'll be happy to make available at that time. But I would love to be able to have that conversation before we have to have that conversation. Thank you.
Mayor Tret, can I ask you a question of Rob? Hey, Rob, this is Michelle. I'm going to ask a question that might be really obvious, but what makes our temporary treatment plant temporary?
I, I got it, Rob.
Go, go ahead, Matt.
So ba- basically, what we would typically do, well, I, I guess I'll start with a little bit of backstory on this. Right now, the city uses slow sand filters for water treatment. And due to the fire, we cannot really rely on those after wildfires. We've, the, we know that there are, the water source has a very unpredictable nature after a wildfire. And slow sand filters are very finicky. And if that, if you have a slug of sediment that comes down, it will plug up your sand filters. And as such, after wildfires, they're very, they're not recommended to be used. They're not recommended to be used. It, it, it's just going to leave the city out of water. So we have to look into some sort of alternative technology. And so two reasons why what we have is temporary. One is typically when we would bring in a new water treatment technology for a city. We would, we, well, first off, we legally have to issue request for proposals. Um, we have to go out, send that out for manufacturers to submit proposals on their technology and why we should use it. Then review those and determine what. Treatment plant we want to put in the city long term. So first off, we, I mean, we have to go for a request for proposals. Um, second. In order to have that equipment specifically designed. Nobody has that available over the shelves, you know, I, I mean, typically there's really not a lot of plants just sitting out there on people's shelves, but. Um, nobody really has something specifically designed for the city. So we had to. Use whatever technology somebody had already built and was sitting out there. And the second component of that is. Because of the unpredictable nature of the water source at this point, there really should be a. Source water study done. To know what is the right long-term technology for the city. We know that, you know, we can make this membrane plant work for the foreseeable future. Till we can get that permanent equipment in, but it might not be the perfect technology to last, you know, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years down the road. So. So kind of the temporary nature of it is one, we don't know what we're going to see yet without a study on the source water. Two, the technology just hasn't been manufactured for the city, really. So tho- those are the two big factors.
So, so does that mean that the city council needs to start thinking about where we can fund the source water study?
Rob? I'll, I'll answer that. Um, no, that, that, all that stuff is going to be funded out of the FEMA. Like the, the long-term FEMA. So FEMA has three different funding things. There are short-term funding. Which, for example, they could do a short-term, they can do, uh, funding that, that helps pay for the, our time. For the water flushing, okay? So that doesn't take very much. Um, documentation on that part, but that only can be up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's obviously not going to cover it. Um, then they have basically what would be, uh, recovery funding. So that's replacement of the treatment plant. And they, we can change the type of treatment plant. And in fact, they, they did indicate that. Not pay for the replacement of the treatment plant if we stay with a slow sand filter. Um, because they know it just won't work. Um, and then the third kind is mitigation. So that would be like doing something to make sure that. A wildfire, uh, disaster never damages it again. So, um. The new treatment plant would be, be paid out of the recovery funding and that's. Pretty solidly FEMA and that study and all that stuff would be paid for out of that FEMA money.
So with FEMA money, do you have to pay for it first and they reimburse? Because I feel like we should get started on it if, because I know those studies take a long while. And if we want permanent water and we need one of those, maybe we gotta get that rolling and figure out how to get that in the works.
So, so technically, yes, with FEMA is, um. What they like to say is they are not, they don't fund projects. They reimburse you for the projects that you've done. So, uh, which is a little bit misleading because all along they're with you in this process so that they know what's coming. They're. Just typically like there's like a business organ will step in with a bridge loan. And they'll pay for it upfront and then FEMA reimburses that loan. So that, that's typically how, how that would work with FEMA.
And, and so that, so I guess to, to go ahead on, on Matt's thought there is before the FEMA money is available. That the special public works fund money through Business Oregon, that, that bridge loan, then they, then that could be, uh, turned into a grant. That's where we would get the money to, to do that. Um, the big thing on that s- s- study is. Um, the big thing is just getting water samples. Um, so once we can do that, we can start taking, and once we got all the water restored up to the treatment plant, we can take. Start taking samples and, and see what that looks like. Um. Part of the thing with the, the study for the treatment plant type is justifying that to the council. So knowing that. That that's the right way to go and justifying that to FEMA that, that that is the, the, the right way to go. So, um, and I don't want to jump to conclusions, but I have an awful lot of experience with water treatment. So I pretty much know. The, the type of plant that is right for the city, but, um, but, you know, we try not to jump to those conclusions till we look at some data.
Yeah, I think that as soon as we get confidence built with the city water system and that we get a permanent or a sort of water study. Um, it helps with the rebuilding of the city because I know a lot of people are unsure about that. And I'm not talking about water now. I'm just talking about. Calling something temporary versus permanent. And, um, so whenever you're ready to tell us that, to get that going, you know, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah, we will. I mean, it's big, it's important to us too because, uh. We want to get going and get that, the permit, the, the permit situation handled as soon as possible. We don't want that to drag. To drag on at all. And the sooner we get started on all of that, the sooner we'll be, we'll be ready to go.
So Rob, I, this, this came up and, uh, Counselor Shepherd brought it up. That water line from Idana to Detroit, could that be part of the mitigation thing? I remember TJ, can I ever remember his last name that? The head FEMA guy here said that they had, do have programs to make things better so that you don't have to fix it again. And I like, I like the idea of a water line going back and forth. So if, if all of a sudden. Um, Idana went down, we could, after we get back to full power, supply them water. As opposed, or if we go down, they can supply us as a backup system. Would that be something maybe we could talk to FEMA about? Under, and I can't remember the number. It was like a project four sixty-eight or something. Um, those came up in a meeting, one of the early meetings, and I have it written down somewhere, but.
Yeah, so when we talked to, uh, when we did, um. The site inspections, when FEMA came out and we went around with them for the site inspections. Um, they brought their mitigation specialist with, with them. And we talked briefly about several different things. And once there's a project number established, once we have that project number established. In a few weeks, um, then their mitigation person can contact. Uh, we've requested at city that the mitigation persons contact the city or contact us really. And then we can start working through those ideas for mitigation. So yeah, that's one of, that's definitely one of those that, of the items for mitigation that we would like, uh, to consider.
Right. I know Kaiser and Say don't have that thing where they can send water back and forth.
Yep.
Yeah, I had a conversation with, uh, OEM's, uh, person that was looking into that too. I'm very sorry.
That's all right. I'm pointing because you're over there, Shelley. So the other way I can, I, I see you. Go ahead, Counselor Angle.
Uh, I'm going to let Kenny talk, actually.
I apologize for breaking for jerk. I'll try to be better. Um. I, I also chatted on a different FEMA walkthrough with OEM's, uh, resiliency specialist, and they were very interested in that water line and also. And some hydrant replacement and infilling projects in Detroit as some resiliency stuff. So they were, they seemed to be very invested in that idea when I talked to them. That's all.
Jim, it's TJ Dargan.
Thank you.
Yep, it was like in the, in my head. I'm like, I know who this is, TJ Dargan.
Yeah, thank you. I can only remember TJ.
So I, I just wanted to like make that point, if I may, that, um. A lot of, of our citizens of Detroit do not know and are not aware of how much time many of us city councillors are spending. Not on Zoom in a city council meeting. Um, I sit on, in a FEMA meeting every single Wednesday. Um, for, it's probably not quite an hour, but every Wednesday I do that. And as does Rob Henry with me and sometimes. Counselor Page is joining us and, and I know Mayor Tret that you are sitting in lots of meetings, but it's, um. We are working very hard behind the scenes, doing a lot of things. So that we can come with information to city council about the status or the, the next step that the city council needs to make. And. And I know it feels to this, to the citizens that we aren't. It just doesn't seem to them that we're doing anything. Um, we are, we are working really hard, um, on. Trying to get drinkable water, even non-drinkable or ash and debris removed and all of the, all of these steps. Um, to get a sewer system so people know how to build. We are working really hard and none of us signed up for this.
Kenny, your hand, is your hand up?
It is up. Uh, so I just wanted to note that. I guess because I'm just out there all the time, I've kind of turned into a, a pseudo field representative for HPH and I hear a lot of. I hear a lot of what's being said. I definitely have heard like a lot of discontent and a general feeling for, um. Residents that they're not feeling like the council is doing enough. And obviously when I'm out there, I try to take my chance to. Uh, say what you all have been doing in that, you know, I don't think Mayor Tret gets more than a few hours of sleep a night because he gets to go to every single meeting. With every single agency ever. Uh, but, uh. Yeah, I guess I just wanted to kind of reiterate that I have heard that complaint and I've tried to tamp it down when I see it, but. It does seem to be really bubbling up at a pretty disturbing rate and I've seen it increasingly over the last couple of months.
Mayor Tret, this is Michelle. Hey, yeah, I've heard the same thing. Um, uh, I think it's just communication. If we can figure out how to communicate, uh, what each. Counselor is trying to do as a group or as an individual, you know, according to their commission. Um, if we could post that somewhere, maybe on that new website, um, maybe that would help. And, um, also, um, I. This isn't tied to the water system, but, um, as far as funding or trying to ask, uh, our state government for money. Um, I've been, so I've reached out to a couple foundations and we're probably not going to get much until we have a city vision. Um, some big write-up on how we want to see the city and, um, a clear ask. And I haven't heard any discussion in the city council meetings according to that. I mean, maybe privately, some of you have gone to different meetings doing that, but. All of us at, as a whole, haven't heard. And, um, I'm wondering if maybe Danielle Gonzalez could help us with what money we have left in the budget. Um, to try and do a city vision. And if someone has already done this, maybe they could let the rest.
So funny you should say that, Counselor Tezdel. I was going to propose at the next city council meeting. That we have a visioning meeting, that we have a, um, brainstorming meeting with all of the city councillors. Off-site, somewhere more like a retreat for a couple of hours one evening, um, where we. We lay out all of the things that we think we need to take care of. And I know this is not really part of the work session, but it, it really, it really actually does affect. Um, our civil engineers as well, but. That we lay out all the issues that we need to fix or work on and then prioritize. Um, and then that we can, then we know really how to drill down and in city council meetings, we understand how. Sort of the importance of what our agenda looks like and things like that. And so, um, I will come with, with a firm pro- proposal. On a, as an agenda item for the February meeting, not, not to do it that night. But to make a, a plan. And along those lines, I think one of the things I've heard that we should perhaps look at doing is a newsletter. Um, that we, we send out a newsletter in some way and they can include the water, a water report. It can conclude. What city commissioners are doing, the meetings that we're sitting in, all those kinds of things. I think that would be a great tool going forward too. Um, again, transparency is where we need to be. And I think we, we're at a place where we can actually put two sentences together about what we're doing. Before it's just been so. A, not adrift, but. Just, just too much information to be able to put into a sentence. And I think now's a good time as we come out of. Of winter and things start to look like we're starting to heal, that that would be a great time to do that. Thanks for, thanks, thanks for your great ideas.
The, um, the, in tied to that is, um, something to do with, um, the safety. And I know we haven't sorted out the commissions, but, um, in order to rebuild, you know, my husband and I have been thinking and I know other people have on the rebuild. Because our home burned down, um, is the fire protection, because I know that it can still burn around our area and the water supply. And the way we protect our new structures that we build. So tied to that city vision, we gotta talk about fire suppression. Um, and just as a side, because I haven't had a chance to really talk about what I'm doing, I'm just going to say, I'm trying to find a fire break from the east side of the town. Um, with the, um, Forest Service trees, because they're burnt trees. And then there's the privately owned land. Where we try and protect ourselves a little more, but the fire suppression is really important still. We joke about not burning again, but we can. And, um, and then the insurance that's tied to that, our home insurance, whether or not we get insurance. So. And that's one of the things that people are hesitant about rebuilding, um, with, is the fire protection and the insurance. And, um, so, and we haven't discussed that. That openly. So I just wanted to tie that to the city vision, um, that maybe we can think about and talk about later.
And that's, that's what I think we should be looking at, all these ideas. Uh, and that's what it's about. And, uh, I'm, I'm thinking Danielle Gonzalez is probably a good. Person to maybe help us. Drive that because she's, she's done that kind of stuff. So, um, go from there. Okay, so this was supposed to be mostly the work session about just funding. Are we comfortable with where that's coming from? Kenny, do you have your hand up again?
I do, I, I do because I had laid some of my stuff off to the edge. Um. Because there is, I think, one thing that does need to be talked about explicitly, and that's funding for flushing of the RNG work. Um, if only because, um, you know, that. I, I've been moving forward with RNG with the assumption that that non-answer from, uh, FEMA essentially boils down to a, uh, a no. Um. Where I am, Rob has asked me to hunt down some of the documentation that they asked for, and I might find it, but, um. Long and the short of it is if you read through their email in great detail, some of the stuff that they asked for, which was notification to RNG's insurance company, that just didn't happen. And that doesn't happen. And that's getting back to that engineering practices thing. It's. It's something that typically construction companies and engineers don't do for water lines, because if you had to do that every time. Say you've had a twenty million dollar piping project, if you did that every time you put a thousand feet of pipe in service, that would get to be very honest very quickly. So people don't do it. Uh, but if they're coming back and saying they want that, we don't have it. Um, so I've been working with RNG, assuming that all that would be a negative. And it seems like there is an agreement between RNG, um. Despite how earlier the relationship with RNG might have been, since the fire, they've been very interested in working with the city in a positive sense. Um, they're very interested in making sure that the city is taken care of. And so what it boiled down to is that. They want to make sure that their lines are flushed properly. And I explained to them what the same thing I think I said in one or two of our staff reports, which is that. Treating RNG's lines differently from the city's lines makes no sense, uh, in terms of a damage mitigation point of view. Uh. In order to flush the system, you have to take the contaminated water someplace and the contaminated water and their lines has to be flushed out someplace in the city system. So. No matter what happens, we had to deal with it. And RNG came to that realization as well. And so if FEMA comes back and gives them more firm negative in the future. RNG would be open to having, basically having us build their insurance and then going after FEMA if their insurance denies it. So. I just wanted to give that little bit of background. I had a conversation with Gary because he just hates corresponding over email. He just, he refuses to correspond over email. He just wants to talk with you. So I'm relaying what I've been told. I don't know if there's any questions that arise out of that, uh, but that is the story that I'm aware of in terms of paying for flushing their work.
So next February, it's February ninth meeting, we may have to entertain a motion to go ahead and charge those lines is what I'm hearing. Rob or Kenny or Matt?
I'd say it's possible. Uh, I'll, I'll discuss this with Rob and Matt in more detail, but I wanted to make sure that this got out at this funding meeting. One of those things where I haven't had a lot of opportunity to talk with people. One of those things where I haven't had a lot of opportunity to talk with people, because I've been in Detroit for every other day for the last week to try to really get your water up and running.
Yeah. Sounds good. So let us know and we can put it on the agenda if we need to. Anybody else have anything? Counselor Page?
Well, I, I just, so we are moving forward with the flushing of those lines, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, and then you, once, uh, we move, the next phase would be to move into usability, charging those lines and taking the old ones offline that are left there.
All of the old lines are already out of service. The big thing that we need to get after them for is I, I, it didn't come up at this meeting, but we've had a lot of paid assistance from Olson LLC for doing this. We've had operators out there twenty-four seven for the last week in order to get this flushing done, which has proven to be a boon. We've caught two major issues in the last few days. Uh, the system is very finicky and it is barely running. Uh, as hard as we're having to run it, um, I can go into more detail about this at a later date, but long story short, we were very glad to have their help, but it has not been cheap. And there, there is some portion of that, that is RNG's fiscal responsibility because it's the portion flushing their lines.
Is the management upheaval with RNG, uh, going to be a, a problem? Uh, as we move towards the closeout of this, uh, as far as finger pointing or what have you, or what's your, uh, what's your, uh, anticipation on that?
I think.
Oh, go ahead. Rob had his hand up, Kenny Chilary.
Oh, no, please, Rob, go ahead.
You're muted, Rob.
Sorry about that. Um, hon- honestly, I mean, I think as far as getting things closed out, uh, I think it's gonna be a good thing for the city. Uh, I, I don't know the details of what happened and all that stuff, and that's really not, you know, I, I don't know, but I, I, I think that, I think it'll be, I don't know how many specifics I can take. I just think it's gonna be a good thing for the city, uh, moving forward.
Fair enough.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I guess I'll adjourn the work session at five thirty-seven PM. Thank you all for, for taking the time today.